Not playing shake number five. Thirty five, I don't know. This is about the children's family. I was like, that may be true. Goal line, so it doesn't. Be able to.
I'll call to order the regular county of city council meeting in City of Malden on Monday, February the twentieth, three o'clock seven P. M. Our perfect order of business is, well, that's my job. Thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate it. As far as I said, we must have youth involved because we need a lot of people out there compared to what we used to have. But thank you for taking that and come out. We will try to make sure our explanations are fully understood. We understand what we're at and what we've got before us. And appreciate that. We will have two public comment periods. The first one is reserved for agenda items, and I'll give you all the details on the public comment as we get closer to that. But we're glad that everyone's here. Let the record be clear. If, of course, I'm here along with all council persons who are here tonight along with our department, the one back there and our city administrator, who's that company? And our city clerk and the city. And also in the audience, District twenty seven, got that one right, our newly elected South Carolina State Representative. And she does, I'm glad you're here to see her, your role compared to the beginning, so appreciate that. Next item on agenda is our invocation pleasure lead is Miss King. Please, that's you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Those who choose to pray, if you have your hands up at this time. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for all that you have given us and for the many blessings in our lives. As we gather tonight, we ask for your hand of blessing on this meeting. Lord, we thank you for the families of former Mayor Ellis Green and Tim Brett who are present with us tonight. We are so thankful for all that they represented within our city. They definitely had two things in common, and that was the love for the city of Malden and for you, Lord. Please show us the way and do us with wisdom. Help us remember your love and grace and be faithful in our service to you. We ask all these things in your holy name. Amen. Please stand for the question.
I pray that it leads to the United States of America. In this whole with liberty and justice for all.
Miss King, one of the things I did forget is we also could have the senior partner who can use law firm with us tonight, our city attorney, Mr. John Newey. Thanks, I think so. Good to see you again. One of the greatest privileges and honors I have as mayor is various proclamations. And tonight, there's two extremely important ones. This is my point of view. And I think this council's point of view that has served our community well and recently lost them. Before I go into further discussion, I didn't guess in the audience. I heard you was one of those special guests from high school.
Yes, no, sure.
Sorry.
I never got a confirmation, but I think they're here. Yeah.
Okay, so don't know if they are. Appreciate that. All right, I will come down and represent. Those who know me know I don't do the slide, but I'm turned to microphone. Oh.
That is a rarity, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, let me start. I've only known Perry for thirty, forty years, and my name is Dave Vaughn, not Doug Vaughn. Just so you know this. Yeah, I do know Doug, yeah. But it's great to be here. Malden is my home. I grew up in Knollwood and actually was born right over here in Glendale before we moved to Knollwood. And so it's so good to be here. Tim Brett was a huge part of my life. I never got to know Mr. Green, but I certainly did know who he was. And the impact he had on Malden and my life growing up here. When I turned thirty, I moved all the way down to Simpsonville, so I didn't go far, still in District twenty seven. And it's a great honor and privilege to represent District twenty seven. It's very much an honor and privilege to be here tonight. I honor those of Ellis Green and Tim Brett of who this town would not be this thing without those two men. So, thank you so much for allowing me to be here and be part of this. I'd ask that Rita, Nick, Andrew, don't make a fun of these. Do you want all of them? Probably with my problems. So, one of the honors at the State House and recognize and specifically done thirty one for my district is we did a house resolution that was read before the entire house. And they all signed off on it. And this, I had this frame, and this is the resolution that was done with all the house members. And also, in Tim's honor, they flew the flag over the State House window. And that is the flag, and just a little note that tells you that this flag was formed in honor. I just wanted to say, you know, I'd like to make you and let you and your family. Thank you, everything, Bob. You want to say anything? He might not remember Tim. Tim has been in this community here a long, long time. He served in the House of Representatives. He served with Governor Campbell. Sometimes up front, but a lot of times behind him. He left there and served with North America, Michelin. It's a political, I can't say that people, liaison out there, instrument in our community to the Salvation Army. Always felt that it was time to recruit me on the coldest day in the world, the rain develop or the kettle. Some reason he didn't make the call back, but that's fine. He was also a instrument of power behind the scenes with Law and Fortune Appreciation Day. A big player in that with secret watching. So, Tim did so much rotary in our community and didn't say my part a lot, but believe me, the people knew who he was and were proud to really attend. I turned with Rita and watched the kids grow up into adulthood, so we so appreciate that. And thank you for everything you did. I really appreciate it.
Yes, one thing.
My local name, Sarah. Sarah, 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 three political. And Doris. Melissa. Please come on. Mother back there too. Any members of the Ellis Green family, come on up.
We know what's wrong with you. You had a birthday yesterday, and then we get older, our mind goes, so.
We're against sure. On behalf of the state of South Carolina, we want to recognize Ellis Green and all he's done. I mean, when I was reading his biography, if y'all play together, I thought, wow, he is even so much more than what I remember him to be. And when I went through it, I told several of the house members who I gave to give this, they all of them came back and said, wow, what a wonderful man. And so I just wanted to know that everyone that has been part of this at the State House was moved just to read that biography. And his biography and all that he's done for, not just Malden, but for our country. Thank you all so much for that. Now, this is also theory. Took the flag, Ms. Rita, and you can see that nice it can be done. I did not know that this could be done. But he took, so we also remember of Mr. Green. We flew the flag over the State House. This is that flag. And just a little certificate showing the representation of the flag. Thank you. We couldn't start it. We started to, I did it again. So, we started telling the story of Ellis. We've been here the rest of the night, actually. But if you ever want to read an impressive bio of a serviceman, a veteran in the U. S. Army, you got that suit. I did get that from this family and read that. You will not believe what Mr. Ellis went through for our nation. His service here in City of Malden is minor compared to what he did. We appreciate that and appreciate that culture soon in the city hall that he was actually one of. And I can only think up there now with Ellis and LMA and Jamie.
Yes.
They're looking down and I know what he can say.
Why are they doing that? One thing that we will have to say is we have to give credit to Tim Brett because he was behind daddy from the beginning. And so daddy wouldn't be here without the help of Tim Brett. So, it's fitting that both of them are being honored on the same night.
And Ellis, next ten days from today, nine days from today, would ought to be like twenty-three years old.
Twenty-three, yeah.
Okay, good. Oh, well, I've never been told I need microphone anyway. So, thank you guys. Say if you want to get divorced. Oh, I have my family, Betty and Sarah and our extended family. I can't express enough to Representative Vaughn and us and Mayor Merritt and the entire council how much we appreciate the thoughtfulness of the remembrance of my dad. So, thank you all. We appreciate it.
Oh, no, you don't have to lie about it.
Mayor, I could just say a couple of things before the Brett's and the Greens leave, and I will try and get through them.
I'm glad he's doing it and not me.
Tim and LS were two sides of the same coin for me. What I do in my daily life, Tim is responsible for. He can take credit for it, or he can take the blame, depending on who you ask. We were, we were great friends. We love to give as much as we got. We love to butt heads, and we love to laugh. I learned so much of what I do in my professional life from Tim. I wouldn't be doing what I do without him from my first job to now. I wouldn't be sitting in this seat if it wasn't for Ellis Green. Because he told me from the time I was this big that this is where I needed to be. So, LS and Tim pushed me from the time I was a kid until now I sit here at the age of fifty with a son in college. And those two men are with me every single day. I thank God that he put them in my life, helped to guide my path. And I just hope that as you carry both of those men with you every day, that you remember the mark that they made in this city, this state, in this country, and that we are all better because they were here. Thank y'all.
What else can Daddy tell of you?
New phone, who is? Sorry, Betty, I can't hear you.
And the one, one eight six five nine with Tim was the, we had some various opinions. Sometimes Tim always was always level-headed and they're polite to me. And there was a room that one time I had ten of them. And one of Tim's one of Tim's quick little phrases when I would dissect his center that he hadn't finished was here, let me finish. And so you would hear that quite often if you were passionate and interrupting, you know. So, I remember that. We can tell that last story all night. I think that there's one thing all of you need to know, hot water heaters spring leaves on Friday nights. LS and LMA were never available to fix a hot water heater on a Friday night because they were when he came by, he came to the truck, hot water heater set me on my way, showed me how to sweat a pipe. Then he showed up Saturday morning to check my work. More than once. Looks good. So, I certainly, our city is blessed that we where we are today become strong men and families of Black and Greens and of the Brett. So, thank you. And that's where I will stop. Next order of business tonight is our reading approval minutes. We have our city council goal setting session that we helped Daniel to say twenty twenty-three. What's the pleasure of council on the minutes?
Page to agree that the minute.
I have a motion to your second, second, and period, Mr. Crayton. Right, any corrections, updates, written? You're not all of the factors that committee say I.
I.
Those opposed lifetime, you're not committed. City council meeting on January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Move for approval. Motion is our second.
Second.
President King, the motion will be mad next. Any updates, exceptions, changes, or anything? You're not all of the players say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed lifetime, you're not the mayor of the past minute. Next order of business tonight is our first public comment period. This public comment period is reserved for any item on the agenda listed tonight. I'll skip them, some of this, but basically you signed up. I haven't signed up to you before me. Both those signed up are for non-agenda items, so unless there's a change, we can wait till we get through the agenda, we'll have another public comment period. And I'll save this dissertation for that period so someone chooses me tonight. Next item is a report from our city administrator.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We've got several presentations tonight for council. Some year in review, just kind of highlight some of the things that took place by various departments in twenty twenty-two. And we're going to go through those in a, in order. So, we're going to start with Chief Miller if he wants to come on down, and we'll go from there.
Eric, how's it going? I'm just doing a statistical review for twenty twenty-two from January twenty twenty-two to December thirty first of twenty twenty-two. On the first one, it's going to have
You're this way.
It's going to have a cause of disturbance. We're close to twenty-five thousand since we we started the community leasing back of our property, checks and nothing. We've got over six thousand less for businesses. City properties and also residential areas. We took a total of twenty-three hundred and seven. Everybody here can say when they say we're all good tomorrow, we're good to take it. We've written more warnings to patients this year because we determined a lot of people weren't, wouldn't want it, wouldn't need a ticket. We've had DUIs. Our DUIs were sixty-five, and we're based in total of six hundred and ninety-eight people over here. Our first, our first thing we're going to go with after that is community engagement that has to do with local subject. They attended over a hundred and forty-six events during the, during the year. They also put on classes, which can wear this active shooter medicine collision prevention. They also regularly attended ribbon cutting events to make contacts and work on businesses in the city. Some of the work we think of this, they did was the Michael Wish Foundation presentation for altar events. We did the cookouts, national night out, and we achieved that we did figure a second award for national night out for the success that we had just recently had with our last one. They did Elliot Santimer, went to the boss group, went on the center and collected that list, and then they went out and distributed them to people in the community, children in the community. And then next page is some pictures of some of the things that they were involved with. So, then where you come to local subject and argue, they conducted their study for demonstrations in schools and for businesses. She's been used over thirty-five times for calls for service at the intermunicipal violence and fire calls for reactive fires and also contract to this. They've been requested sixteen times for agencies outside of Malden, some over in Grandville County and Spartanburg County. She's also done sixty-six wellness, employee wellness contact, which effectively she ran her, to the police department and socialized the dog and gives them a one-footed kill. So, next thing we have is training. This year, the police parks conducted over five thousand two hundred and fifty hours of trains, an average of one hundred and fourteen per officer. These train hours consisted of inserted training, advanced training, and two of the big key things that we've worked on to make sure that it wasn't, it was probably the escalation. And it was his national license, somehow to deal with people and spot them in the wellness sooner. We also want to thank council for our budget for training because if it weren't for that, we wouldn't have the caliber of officer we have at this time. Codes, we had a total of one thousand sixty-five calls and asked them call in citizens, officers, patrol and other city entities. Over the course of the year, we had over four hundred and twenty-three of the signs that are like for sales signs, political signs and advertising signs, when we do political signs and advertising signs for businesses, we'll contact those individuals so that they can come back and pick up their property. Majority of the calls come during spring, summer, as when the grass cut season is. We've had multiple nuisance calls that we're working on currently, and we're in the process of cleaning and closing now. As the member refers, twenty twenty-two, we had two hundred and thirty-nine businesses that had paid their business license between the first of November and the sixteenth of November. All the businesses have been talked to and communicated to by the code's officer. And as a result of that, on fifteen, we started to retain and pay for the business that had been, businesses that had been closed. And we had eight calls for hospitality taxes. Here's another big one is accidents can be an issue, but during the fourth of that one year, the police department put over about sixteen thousand one hundred and sixteen road miles on the patrol fleet. And majority of these were gone by route to call for traffic safety, property checks, community patrols, and responded to calls for service.
Thank you, Chief. Fire Chief McCo, you're next.
Thank you, Eric. The council will do a year review twenty twenty-two for the fire department. Go to the first slide. We had four thousand nine hundred and twenty-five calls for twenty twenty-two. Twenty twenty-one, we had four thousand eight hundred and sixteen, which is a two-point-two increase in call volume. Then we had fires. We had a total of a hundred and sixteen, had forty-four structural fires, forty-three grass fires, twenty-two vehicle fires, defined to like build whatever's five, and others two, and eleven usually called. So, this estimated total loss was seven hundred eighty-five million, I think seven hundred eighty-six million. And total saved with eighty-seven million, six hundred ninety-eight thousand.
Seven hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Yeah.
Five thousand, sorry.
Yeah.
And then the call volumes for the year, as you see, our busiest hour is from eight A. M. to eight P. M. Then on the next one, you have the average response time, which is will be about five minutes, that we have to meet for IPO or qualification. The next one is going to be our county portions, and it's like that fire prevention, fire marshal doing, they had city, had nine hundred and seventy-six city stations in the district. We represented Grandville County with a hundred and fifty-one and had six hundred fifty-eight conferences. New construction was a hundred and seventy. You can see on the other side, that's saying from twenty twenty-one. Then fire prevention division, we had a total of events in two hundred and seventy-one. Bucket shows, touch a truck in towards was twenty-six. We installed a hundred and sixty, hundred and sixty-six smoke detectors in residence. We had, we held four CPR classes, fire exchange classes, and twenty-two car seat inspecting and installed for our residents and thirty-six city events, and that was standby was five and community engagement, we're team. In the training, in twenty twenty-two, we present, or we done fifteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-five and a half hours, and last year. done fifteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-five and a half hours and last year we done fifteen thousand three hundred and thirty-one point two five. And you'll see actually a heat map, this is from last year to current. That's where your call volumes, that's where the calls are coming in into the county and to the city. And the red areas you see there, like that out of Fort Woodbridge Road, that's going to be uh, nursing homes out there, then you'll have eight fifty, these brothers with NAC, with no red area and the main intersection right, right here, these brothers. I call volumes, and that's what ripped in the red area. Then none of this will be possible without the hard work and dedication of the fire department. I like thank, thank them for doing what they do. Protect the city and citizens. Call ahead. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right, next. I can get this out of the way. There we go. Okay, next is David Dero.
Hey, Mayor and Council, if you have uh, business development services, maybe give a pretty full overview of some of the things that we've seen going on in our apartment last year. So in this first slide, uh, so any of the acres that we annexed into the city this last year, and uh, you'll see that was forty-three acres of residential development. Uh, when you look back in the past five or six years, who's had, had some incredibly huge years in two thousand and eighteen and nineteen. And then still another pretty big year in twenty twenty-one. Uh, last year was uh, kind of more in line with the other in-between years, only last five or six years. And our next slide uh, shows uh, how we did residential permits last year. You'll notice that in twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-two, I'm sorry, was a slight dip from twenty twenty-one. Uh, twenty twenty-one was kind of a COVID crazy year. A lot of people were at home, decided they needed to do projects at home. Um, a lot of people wanted to move this area as well, so we saw a lot of permit activity going on in twenty twenty-one that was uh, much higher than ever and and way beyond the norm. So last year was still fairly high, but uh, a little bit of a drop from that. Uh, the next slide shows you how many new homes we permitted to start in the city of Malvin. And uh, again, twenty twenty-one was a, a little bit of a peak year for us. That was the COVID craze going on with real estate. Uh, twenty twenty-two, we did drop down a little bit, but we're still at a really high level compared to any other previous years ever in the history of the city. You'll see that we have a projection on here for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. What we've done is we've reached out to the track hillers who are currently doing projects in the city mall and asked them to give us an estimate of how many permits do they expect to pull in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, and that's where this number comes from for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. If they hold true to what they're expecting to do, and this does not include any new sub divisions that may still yet come online, we're expecting for uh, to permit more new homes than we ever have in the history of Malvin over the next couple of years. The next slide shows the number of building inspections that we are doing. Um, this is continuing to peak. We haven't seen that fall back down yet. Um, and that number on there for twenty twenty-two is over eighteen thousand in building inspections that we did that year. Uh, you may wonder, well, why was that number going up still when the other numbers are, were dropping a little bit in twenty twenty-two? And that's because there's a little bit of a lag. So people pull permits, uh, but they do not get to the bulk of their inspections till later on as they're into all their construction work. But there are a couple of other factors maybe going on there. The next slide shows commercial permits. Uh, this one's pretty steady. And then the uh, last slide on here shows business and contractor licenses. Again, that's also pretty steady as well. So we're, we're steady on the commercial and business side of our activity. Any questions? Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, David. Next is Malden Recreation Bart, coming on.
Well, this might sound a little short here. Mayor Council, uh. Uh, for coming, Malden Recreation, a long time resident of Malvin and a dinosaur is mayor of the company sometimes. So uh, first one's almost, I don't think all you guys are there, but we could move on our division, our department. As we do, the rec department has three divisions up under it. We have our senior center, our sports center and our recreation or athletic uh, division as well. Uh, we offer at senior center various activities. Uh, we do cardio uh, three days a week. We have our exercise machines.
You, you want me to go forward or just wait? Okay.
Uh, as you see, our number is trending up. Uh, a lot of it was covered, uh, but the last year we have seen an increase. Uh, if you go by Old Friday, football was uh, crazy. Our cardio classes are um, averaging twenty-seven and eighty uh, three days a week and we got good folks teaching that class and it makes it exciting for the seniors and gives them activities to do to get out of house. So um, you could have said uh, the senior center, what do you have next? All right, we got yoga, uh, lion ass, and I do need that. And uh, as I mentioned, part of this slide.
That's it.
Uh, they pick ball, play C, uh, men's day. Uh, they're doing tax, AARP, they're doing their tax with seniors as well. Uh, and then have our technical support, like you have an icon, like I have my mom. She's trying to figure out such a turn call me. She goes at senior center and they up for digging that out, do a good job of that. So uh, we have guest speakers uh, as well, um, throughout the month. Uh, ego, bongo. Bridge, that's my son. But.
It's it's lovely. Okay, good. Yes, sir.
Uh, sports center. Uh, that is a unique building, safety yard, as you see. It doesn't look that nice and clean. That was when it's first built, uh, but it's still one of the cleanest facilities. Uh, I think around, I tell my staff, that's one of my pet peeves, keep that facility clean. Um, and uh, it obviously that rock wall that you see extending up there. Uh, we have that in there and have our basketball in there, have our, we have our summer camp in there. As you can see, our numbers are trending up. Uh, I do have numbers for y'all. Uh, the average attendance on the day is about two hundred and forty-seven. Uh, total members right now, I believe, is thirty, three thousand three hundred and ninety-eight. Uh, so Malvin has various zip codes. So with our new software, we can pinpoint now who lives inside the city as before we did not. And so uh, that's what we have great staff there. They do various uh, classes. Uh, they do rip, plexi, pound kettleball, silver sneakers, uh, silver sneakers. If you don't know what that is, if you're senior, you have your insurance uh, with the city, it's that reimbursed, the mayor insurance company. Not, we buy or whatever membership that they, so on a daily basis, they come to give percentage of that each month. So they, they come in each time, it tallies it up and it gets some of that money back. So uh, we have a good bit of folks doing that, mainly they do the walking trail, walking track. Uh, all right, the treadmill, electricals, we come in bikes, uh, rolling machines, universal chains, rock balls, I mentioned, dynamic balls and the sandbags, those are just part of those two on their end down there are basically it's part of the class that you take. I also have cycling classes as well in there. That's not up there. Uh, that slider, the fitness, councilman Kuzma, Kuzma is doing that as well and uh, she sees me at the wrecking basketball. I see her up there sweating. So uh, you go there on Saturday morning and place it packed. So basketball's over, which is going to be a little bit better. Athletics, springtime, our, our numbers are raising that as well. As you see, uh, when we get to that. Uh, spring, we're getting a start now is, let me, uh, flat football, baseball, lacrosse. Yeah, that's three I got. And so we'll start that. Baseball is trending up. I, I was here when we had sixteen, seventeen hundred kids. Don't think it's ever going to do, do that again. We can try, we can learn our things to, to, to get to those numbers, but a lot of the post of the baseball uh, is trending out just because it's travel, travel baseball. My son plays baseball and he also does rec baseball. He does rec baseball, he does flat football. So we're out there. Uh, my two are like park rats. So we're out there every night and we, and which is a good thing. A lot of families come up from sports. And so uh, that is really growing too. Uh, we just started our soccer program. We got passing boy Andre Barton, who's our instrumental, gave that start. Uh, we do that in fall, type football, cheerleading, and we also have fall baseball again. Type football's trending down a little bit just because of the injuries and people and it's just COVID. We're getting that back. We're getting that number back up as well. Uh, so I do have to play football. We have this amount of plays here. And then our basketball, probably our biggest program. Uh, we're running two gyms. We're actually running three games a night, probably five, six days a week. We got the Ray Hopkins Senior Center, we use and we have the sports center and double gym is packed pretty much every night. Uh, just got to do that. Uh, it's got that, uh, our yearly numbers, what we've done from last year to this year, uh, we're trending up in sports due COVID is kind of over, as David mentioned, it's, it's trending and people getting out more in the parks, especially uh, and I guess we want to, man, did you got a picture of that?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Uh, y'all have done a great job. I'm in the council and the mayor. Uh, these are one of the nicest facilities, uh, with all the playground, all three parks got hit, uh, with new facilities, new playgrounds, including uh, Springfield City and uh, Culprits Center rounds, it's not really considered a park, but around that area, uh, you go by there every day and that place is packed, just packed. People want to come there, they enjoy coming there. Uh, and so that is a huge. And that picnic shelter gets used a lot with birthday parties, uh, Matthew's guys that go out there and take, uh, tape off every other day, I believe, because they have birthday parties on the weekends. And so uh, on our rooms, uh, we, we run out parks, there are a lot of deals, people that want coming there, they have tribal baseball team or just want to bring a team out there, practice, we do rent those, run out our picnic shelters, which are huge. Uh, huge people are there on the weekends, so family reunions and birthday parties, as I said. And so uh, Pine Forest is kind of a tropical park, it's kind of a hidden park. We have a, it's not up there, but it's kind of nice back of all court only, it's full side. We just did that about two years ago. And so that's uh, that's kind of the hidden jewel of, and I really noticed about that part, I thought we're trying to do better on our end is uh, let people know about that park. And so I think we're summer camp, summer camp. Uh, we filled that summer camp up. Uh, we started uh, silence, there were people signing that, uh, putting sound in camp. I think it started uh, twelve o'clock midnight, it's full by nine o'clock the next morning. We had two people on the wagon, this was definitely two people, yes. Uh, I barely got my, my, my son signed up. So that's how this is, this is where, where we were in, right? So I don't think my staff and I don't think uh, the other departments, police and fire, especially Matthew's uh, department, because me and him have to work together. It's a unique situation where you have the rec department beating these fields and me and Matthew talk each other constantly uh, about some issues, you know, either vandalized or something broke or something needs to be done or whatever else. And me and Matthew make a good team, I'm not a sentence because he's back there. The baseball was start, kind of yourself. Baseball building good, but I, it's not me, it's just my staff. And these guys I have to work with and those other parts, because I have to utilize the police uh, when, you know, we need them and uh, also fire, and I just want to tell this to you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Bart. Matt Williams, come on down, sir.
Uh, well, before, before Matt gets started, I just wanted to note to Mr. Conley that he did not thank me for not giving him grief for his birthday this Friday. Um, I was perfectly fine. I didn't make any old jokes and he hasn't thanked me for it and I'm a little hurt. I thank you, Mike.
All right. Um, Mayor and Council, uh, public work department, five, six divisions for the sanitation, the streets, the sewer, parks and grounds, sweep, building maintenance. Uh, two twenty, two thousand twenty-two was a great year for productivity. Um, we're going to go through some slides, kind of give you a number of these four my divisions, but uh, a couple of highlights that we want to point out that I didn't include in these slides. Um, you know, kind of benchmarking that we, we were accomplished during the year. There were kind of uh, target goals that cross off the list. Uh, one was acquisition and implementation of two sidearm trash trucks. This allowed us uh, with the capital purchase, to convert all of the daily trash routes to sidearm trash trucks. It eliminated the use of inmates and paid labor. Uh, we acquired and implemented a new asset management work order system, public works, so we could track everything, all the data that you're going to see here, stuff that's coming out of the system that wasn't tracked before. Um, we obviously got on-call engineering services this past year uh, in our stormwater goes. And then we also completed a citywide H-shack replacement as part of the capital improvement plan. We, we spent roughly, up to the call, five hundred thousand dollars to uh, swallow about thirty H-shack units across all the parks and all the city facilities. Uh, we had cranes out there, we put them on the roof of the sports center. It was fun. We uh, we, we made the city just a little bit better. Nice. First slide here, we have sanitation information. Uh, man, I know you just put your cane out of the curb, you put your brush out, it leaves out, we just come and pick it up. Uh, as David mentioned, we have more houses than we ever had in the city of Malvin and we are picking up more waste than at any other point in the history of the city of Malvin. Um, as you can see here, our cycle stream is only about ten percent of our waste stream. Uh, it's kind of low. Um, maybe you could do better. Um, but I mean, one other thing, yoga there, um, we think of a lot of brush, we think about sixteen thousand cubic yard of leaves and or two thousand tons of limbs, a lot of brush. We're going to continue to collect more. Um, but like I said, most we've ever done, we're going to continue to do more. Um, and we did this all without adding any extra staff. One for that. All right. The next slide, it's streets division. Uh, what I have here is three years kind of documenting what we've done. Uh, historically, you know, streets was the kind of, you know, the small division, it's just five guys. Uh, they just fill puddles and then cut that brush on the side of the road. Uh, under the mayor's correction, we converted the streets division to more of a stormwater oriented group. Uh, and as you can see here, you know, the number of miles of roadway have increased. Uh, we, we, we obviously we acquired the crack film machine, we've been, you know, resurfacing on the roadway. But a lot of the data you see here is, you know, this is the city infrastructure along the roadways for stormwater. And you can see that, you know, went from zero or nowhere to a significant amount of work. Um, you know, one of the things I would point out is important that you, that doesn't really come across in the data, but in looking at twenty twenty-two, we, you know, did a hundred and sixty-eight patch base inspections, you know, a hundred and sixty-eight inspections, a hundred and one of the bases had been completely rebuilt. Uh, it's a huge timesing, there's an aging infrastructure and we're very glad to get a town in the public work department that can rip out walls, leave faith and, and, you know, laying pipe, dig and ditch it and block out these bases. Um, that's what we account between the street division. Uh, the next line is the sewer. All right, sewer. So like, like the street, I, I, I've shown three years of data. Um, once again, the three years of also the three years I've been here, so you can see what I've accomplished and achievements. Uh, uh, here around the bed, you can see that we've added in three years, you know, we talked about all this development, most help the better. We added ten miles of sewer. That's a comfort that increases your footprint. I had mine, a lot. Um, we, we, we have daily jobs that include manual inspection. We, we, we have daily jobs that include manual inspections, video cleaning, and we also have rehab efforts. Uh, the USCPA requires that you camera clean approximately ten percent of your system annually. It's part of the C-MON, which we have with Reva, the city goal that I set for it was twenty-five percent. As you can see that we, we, we've got to the point where we, we've exceeded in cleaning, uh, and we're just on the threshold of meeting or exceeding that goal for a video. Uh, manual sections where we've obviously surpassed that goal. Um. And then a little other, the data down there that we use, I'm going to kind of go over here is the rehabilitation and repairs. Um. The sewer division historically didn't do any work as far as if they found something wrong with the system. It was contracted out of the expensive city. Uh, point repairs, you can see the last three years, one, three, last year we did nine, just in January, this year I'm already done four. Um, the guys have been training, they've been shown, they've, we, we, X on the yard, we've done the work, we've done the one where this was a little longer contract out of stuff in house. We've also spent a hundred and four manual repair. Quite similar to like the smaller hatch base and repair. If you work in office, the city has a percentage of money and you can allocate that money to other things like the rehabilitation that I showed around the bottom. We've done some manual rehabilitation in the first two years. This past year with the, we received a five hundred thousand dollar grant from Rural Infrastructure Authority. With that money and some money from the sewer fund, we re-lined, which is basically to put a brand new interior lining and all the sewer pipe to eliminate any leaks. About twelve thousand, you know, six hundred eighty-five feet of pipe. That means that that two plus mile of pipe is good for another fifty years, never have to worry about it. So we're looking forward to do some more of that in the years to come. Um, next slide is the parks division. Parks day is a little bit harder to present just because they don't have, you know, they, they pack grass, they. Pull leaves and pick up trash. And so I, I presented their information of how much time they, they dedicate it to each one of the tasks of the past year. Um, a couple of big projects that they accomplished in two thousand twenty-two, uh, you haven't seen city park, build one, that's like the marquee park at city. City park, that whole field was taken back down to dirt. We put in beautiful sod, we re-lined the, the infield. Um, it's a marquee park. Um, our side of the concept of that beer, uh, they continue to work in removing all the pine straw. I mean, the plant of red is along the city to help with stormwater drainage by putting decker and stone. They've also, um, we look around in the parks, locals underground, see a lot of younger plantings. We, we planted more last year. Then at any point that anyone can remember, as well, you know, proving candy cover, getting beautiful flowers. Right now they're doing the same thing up front. They're revamping the whole landscape architecture in front of city hall here. Last slide is the fleet division. The fleet division, we, uh, we work underneath me and we take care of the police, fire, everyone vehicles. Um, during two thousand twenty-two, you can see that the whole of the work of the fleet department has been the police department. Um, as she said, those guys are on the road, it's five hundred thousand miles, just they, they, they're in these vehicles and, uh. We're actually expecting that in the years to come, that number is going to go down. Um. You guys have gradually replaced a lot of their aging vehicles that we continue to patch together. We don't use that anymore because they got nice new ones. Uh, but the rest of the work in the fleet is really just, you know, sanitation and public work. Uh, the other thing going to be these building maintenance, um, I didn't really bring a slide for building maintenance. If we're still developing the division. Um, really right now, they're just helping to implement the asset management, change our own duties and then. Making sure these buildings stay together. Any questions?
Yes, sir. Mr. Williams, I'm, uh, this. Of course, the acting man, this critic at times, but, uh, great job on what we just seen here. Uh, leading question here on the sewer department. We know that we probably have a major monumental task ahead of us. As Safran D O T is building a better Butler from time between now and the next decade. Uh, so you've got a task ahead of you there involving the street and the sewer. Give us what you would, what you think that's going to be in that one.
Certainly. So, um. The South Carolina Department of State of Representatives came up with rules, they lost a dozen of the game that mandated anytime that they do any road work. Uh, they want all the utilities out to monitoring the asphalt. You know, historically, you guys can have manholes under, you know, under the asphalt, water lines, gas lines. Now the DOT says everyone's got to be outside the asphalt in the right way. For this project, they acquired some right of way and they're going to require that everyone, particularly water, city mall and, uh, gas company. Everyone's utilities get out underneath the asphalt into the side of the road. Uh, we're working with, uh, CHA, which was formerly Frager, our city engineer, to redesign the sewer system. Um. Based on the stormwater infrastructure that the DOT is putting in place, obviously our sewer system has to be relocated and realigned. Um, and we can't stay in place. We're looking conservatively, uh, with our design. We're, we're meeting next week, uh, with the folks from, uh, ICE, I'm the engineer for the part of education. You know, if, if they don't negotiate with us, but all we're looking at conservatively, conservatively, conservatively about four million dollars to relocate our sewer system along. Public road from near city hall all the way down to the bridge or pavon. Um, and that will include not only this, the mainline sewer, but all of the services for every business. Uh, as far as the road goes, you know, we'll, we'll. We're not adding any extra lanes. We're going to be relocated in places that can do bridge by the pavon. Um. And at this point, we don't have any items, but that, that may change in the future.
Yeah, I was just wanting to hear that, that there's a lot ahead of us that we're moving into this construction phase with them. Uh, on a writer note, uh, my thanks to the parks, park, uh, division, the, uh. I think we have the best looking baseball fields and playing fields in the U.S. state. And in that way, ever since I remember my kids playing here, so, uh. To those of our, you and your team in the parks division, uh, for keeping those fields playing and looking fantastic. Appreciate it. You know what else? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we've got one more. Our final update is from the cultural center and. Mr. J R Charles was unable to make it to the meeting tonight due to an injury he sustained. Um, he's okay. He just rolled an ankle and it's swollen up, so he's not here, but I think I can allow him to come over. The web. And so let me see if he's still there and didn't fall out on us. Jared, can you hear us? All right. So that's not working. So we'll just leave him be and then we'll come back to that. Um, he's muted right now.
So I'm going to ask him to unmute.
Yeah, that's, let's see. All right. Well, he's not available, so we'll, oh, yeah, we'll come back to that, um. Next month. So we'll do that update and we'll just continue on with the agenda, sir. Yeah. Yeah, we'll just keep going.
Mayor, before we move into, uh, standing committees, if I can ask you if, um, we have any students from Fisher Mill who do that. If y'all stand up. So, um, the guidance department at Fisher Mill reached out to the city, um, they're in the process of doing job shadowing, uh, and asking if they could, uh, shadow city council. And once explaining the, this is not technically a full-time job, um, they decided to, uh, ask the students to come to a meeting. So the students from Fisher are here tonight to get a flavor of how local government works. Uh, and I'm glad that with all of the reports that we've had from, uh, each of our department heads, um. That helped make this city run smoothly, um, that y'all have been able to get a sense for that. So thank you to department heads. For all the work that y'all did in your reports tonight and thank you, Mr. Duncan, and thank you, council. And most of all, um, thank you, young folks from Fisher. For wanting to see how government works and hopefully one day you'll be sitting up here.
Thank you, Mr. Matt. And I think you also have you to understand with the six council people sitting up here, uh, left and right. Each one of them chairs a standing committee that's involved with these department heads. So let me ask the council to just introduce yourself and thank the departments this chair.
Pat Mattney and I chair community development, which includes economic development and the cultural center.
Harold King and I chair public safety, which includes the police department, fire department and our judicial department.
Jason Gray and I chair the public works and that include, you saw the sewage, the trash pickup, the leak pickup, those type of.
Uh, Michael Reynolds, I chair finance and policy, which includes the money to back up all those things.
Uh, Frank Ogden, I chair the recreation department and I've been.
I am Kuzer and I chair business development services, which handles all of the, uh, business permits and licensing for all the building. Uh, homes and businesses around town.
Thank you, council. Now we'll move into our business. More of business agenda, let's, uh, move to the agenda this way. Uh. I believe it's agenda, which they don't queue. Our report of our standing committees, uh, financing policy, Mr. Ross.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my committee didn't meet last weekend or last month, but we had still several things going on within the department. Um, Mr. Duncan, coming with the day, we found our budget calendar out and our meeting is on March twenty-first.
Uh, the first meeting is the, uh, second Thursday, which is March sixteenth at six P M. And then March thirtieth would be the second meeting at six P M. as well.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Duncan. So keep those on your calendar. Next item I have in the standing committees is. We have with Evergreen Solutions, which come up, um, Evergreen Solutions that are company class study in the city, which was approved, I believe in November. Um, so they're here to give us a draft report, gives a report, what they've been working on. And we'll turn it over to Mr. Putnam, our human resources, uh, manager and. Let me show you there.
Mayor, council, uh. And as Councilman Rose said, it's been a little over a year ago, we began to have a discussion with, uh, this group. To say we needed to have a full, uh, compensation and classification study done, uh, for the C. Uh, for a couple reasons. The last one had was in, uh, twenty eighteen. And then we passed a very unusual time since we've come out of COVID as far as, uh, salaries and things of that nature. We, uh, with your leadership approval, we went out and our, uh, few, uh, then we had bids came in and with our team, we were able to select. Uh, Evergreen Solution and that we got Carl, uh, Bush and Mark, uh, Holcomb with us. Uh, and they have been with us since day one, to the point that, uh, Mark was the first one I talked with when we were starting down the road with the. The, uh, contract and Carl has been here one time for a full week talking to our employees, talking to our department heads to get feedback. On our comp and class, uh, that we have here in the city, uh, and they've also, um. Came in and told us what the next place was and they're going to go to the places, but we. All employees had an opportunity to voice their concerns. They also had a chance to, uh, talk about what their job descriptions were. Make sure that what we say we do is what we do. And we did that, went through the employees, through the supervisors, all the way up to the department level. Uh, so tonight we have the summary of what all we've done over the last, as you said, we started talking about this, uh, probably. Right before the end of two twenty-one, we ended up with a contract in August. And then we, uh, started to kick off in September and we wanted to get it about, done about this time, uh, late, uh. January went over just a little bit, but, uh, we think we've had a very successful and very thorough study. So, uh, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mark and let Mark Holcomb and let him come up and give you the summary.
Thank you all very much for having me. Uh, I appreciate it. My name is Mark Holcomb and I am the project manager from Evergreen Solutions, uh, in terms of the engagement on our side. As was your chair, Carl Peters is another, uh, consultant here with me, uh, and he's been engaged in the project, uh, you know, from the very beginning, as we said. So we take a look at the first slide here. Uh, there are a number of things that we want to talk to you about today. I think your, um, HR budget, the HR job, we're kind of summarizing the things that we're going to talk about. That's from here, but we'll start with the study goals and project phases, which is a little bit of review, uh, to, to sort of identify the things that we did from the beginning until now. The steps that we took to get to this point in the engagement. The employee meetings and the current system findings, those are both, uh, either reviews of data or, you know, reviews of information or. Their, your employees shared with us when we came outside of our area. So it's, it's going to talk about how are you doing things right now? Uh, what is your current compensation system? And what are employee perceptions about your, your current compensation program? Then we get into what do we see in market? And so the market analysis obviously involves, uh, you know, very new to, um, you know, a handful of other local organizations that you need. And, uh, we'll end on recommendations and next steps, sort of the things that we're advising that they all would, uh, would do with the deal. So with the study goals, it is important to keep in mind with a compensation and classification study. Uh, we really have two main things, uh, in a lot of the beginning, and that's to review your system for internal equity, that's model of external equity. And so all of our recommendations, everything that we do looks at both of those items. And what that means is when we say internal equity. Uh, that means we're going to look at your positions, look at your employees, look at the, uh, compensation system we have. And make sure that employees are paid and classified. If you're looking at somebody in a different department and you do a very similar job to that first. If you have the same roles, responsibilities, duties, you have a similar level of leadership and complexity, you would expect to have a similar level of compensation available to you. Uh, same thing, looking up and down the organizational chart, if you have more leadership, if you have a more complex job, if you're supervising, uh, you know, a unit or a team or a department. You would expect to be compensated and classified in a man that would respect that. And so that internal equity is definitely a big piece of the puzzle. I think everybody sort of intuitively gets the external equity piece, obviously comparing to market, comparing to what your peer organizations are doing. Uh, if somebody here at the city or even expecting employees looking for a job. Are they going to get the same offer here that they're going to get elsewhere for doing the same work? And so those are the two things that we keep in mind. All the recommendations factor in both of those items. So it's not as simple as just looking at the market and saying, what is the average pay in market? Uh, again, we have to see how that would, uh, impact your internal system, your internal equity and make sure that we look at those items. We typically divide up the project into about four phases at a high level. And so phase one is the outreach phase. That's really all about data collection. So it starts with that initial project meeting, uh, that was, was just referenced, uh, you know, I had that phone called Evergreen side. Uh, and we really spoke to the organization about what are the things that we needed from you all to complete this study setup. Uh, what are the pieces of data that you can share? Can you give us a little bit of your job descriptions? Can you tell us about your current compensation policy, uh, et cetera? But it also involves the outreach period, um, you know, that was headed up by Carl here when he came out in person to meet with your employees. To hear from them, to collect that data from employees about, you know, where are your concerns? What are the things that, uh, we are on your mind when it comes to compensation and classification? And lastly, we also gave the employees a chance to fill out surveys that talk to us about what are the job responsibilities that they have? Are your job descriptions accurate or do they need to be updated? So that was a lot of data collection that we did there. Uh, again, both through your agent department as well as individually with employees, giving them the chance to share as well. Once we have that data collected, that takes us to phase two, the internal analysis is our setting all of that data that we just collected. Uh, so it involves something called assessment of current conditions, where we look at your pay structures, we look at, uh, any compression that we want to identify in the system. You know, are your salaries compressed? Are you, are you properly advancing employees through the pay ranges? Uh, we look at things like your current pay system and whether or not you have appropriate number of grades and ranges, whether or not it fits the system that you all need to have. We also read every single one of those job surveys that's submitted to us. Um, so we have a consult that goes through every single one of those surveys individually. Uh, looks for similarities and differences, looks at, uh, people with the same job title. Are they doing the same thing that I? Do we need to recommend new titles? Do we need to recommend new pay ranges? Uh, so we're studying all of that information that we collected, um, in phase two. Before phase two ends, um, you know, sort of on the tails of that, we, we start into phase three. Uh, so we definitely have to start the internal analysis first to make sure we have a good grasp of your system. Uh, but before that's completely finished, we do move on to phase three, which is the market collecting. Uh, but before that's completely finished, we do move on to Phase Three, which is the market collection. And so that external analysis, we start to pull in data from, uh as I mentioned, a couple of peer organizations. Uh, other cities, local governments, the area, uh so we start collecting that data in Phase Three. Uh, and then bring that together in Phase Four, with the results of Phase Two, the results of Phase Three, we move into the recommendation. So we utilize all of the information that we've learned up until this point. Um, in Phase Four, to leave out finding an implementation option and a solution that we can recommend that will address. As many of the concerns as we find in the study as possible, so both internally and externally speaking. Uh, which is the option we believe best addresses uh addresses your needs. Uh, and then the reporting is also part of Phase Four, so a written report as well as things like this coming and presenting publicly. What we did and then what we found throughout the study. So with those employee meetings, we had a lot of comments from employees, uh there's a much more detailed version of the final written report that we can share. But we did want to pull out a few of the highlights, uh and then a few of the concerns as well that we heard from employees. Uh, really the things that we heard repeated most often um across departments and across the organization. So we look at the positive comments, the things that employees share, and we ask the question. Why do you want to work here, or what attracts you here in the first place? Uh, or if you're a long-term employee, why haven't you stayed here all these years? And some of the main things that were brought up for our benefits, what was one of those? Uh, some people talking about, um you know, health insurance coverage, the sports center, you know, access to that. Um, there's really the whole benefits package, it's like, look, maybe I could pay more, you know, in a job or private sector or somewhere else. I wouldn't have the same benefits that I have here, and that's really valuable to me. Uh, the benefits was definitely something that was mentioned a lot. The culture was another one, so the culture really talking about that work environment, the people that you're working with, your department. Uh, some people mentioned their direct supervisor, some people mentioned the the employee of their team, uh but again, the the people that you work with. Play a big part in your satisfaction at at your job, and so that was something that people did mention. Um, for the most part, we have got a lot of positive feedback on that. Uh, and then lastly was the schedule, um and so people did say that, look, you know, I like the the steady uh job schedule, I like having holidays off. I feel like it allows me to have that work-life balance that I'm looking for, and and I don't know that I'd get it if I worked somewhere else. As we move into the concerns, there were a few concerns certainly that people share, and 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 you know, not necessarily things that are completely out of a work area. These costs that we go to coffee here, some of these are at different places, but I think employees are very passionate for some of these, and say, hey, we want you to look at this. This is your chance, we're here for a common study, we want to make sure that these are brought up, as I mentioned. So the first one relates to the external equity, this is uh employees that have concerns, they said, hey, I don't think we're competitive, I don't think we've kept up. Uh, with the market, particularly over the last, you know, few years, employees were very concerned um about the number of pay raises. They were able to get, but not able to keep in pace with the market, so employees talked about uh cost of living increases and want deputy pay. Uh, that they really felt would have kept them more competitive, that was something employees wanted to share. Um, again, with the compensation study, it's something you you expected here, but it was definitely number one on employees' minds. Internal equity was another concern, so uh employees did talk about internal equity, that that does focus a lot on compression and whether or not. Employees were being compensated and classified appropriately for the work that they do. So some of the employees share that, hey, I've been here for X number of years, why is there somebody new making about what I make? Uh, you know, if I'm doing all of this work and they're doing that work, why don't we have the same job title that's not the same? Uh, and that's what employees, I mean, wanted to share as well. Last was professional development, employees talking about, you know, if I'm going to be here, if I'm going to be here for the long term. I want to be able to develop my career, I want to be able to develop my skills, and I have an avenue for advancement. Uh, so those are a few things that employees wanted to share, you know, with with their with their expectations of the system, the strengths, weaknesses that you have. When we looked at our assessment of current conditions. Some of the things that came up for us, the strength that you have is that you do have, um, you know, very simple reason to understand the structure. Uh, you know, looking at the grade progression between them, you know, if the system's got up to date, if the system's market wants it. Uh, there's no confusion as to which area that by the pay scales that you have. With that being said, um, you know, when we get to those concerns, market conditions recently, and in particular, I know it's just referenced in previous talks. So yeah, the twenty twenty's been a lot of change in the last few years. And when you look at inflation, when you look at the way the market's moving, when you look at the competition that there is now. Uh, organizations across the country are experiencing recruiting and retention success. Uh, and so I think the scales, you know, that was something that that definitely we wanted to take a look at, whether or not they were keeping up with the market, whether or not you're you're. You know, able to give us increases to keep employees within the. Classification titles as well, when we start looking at. You know, the the work that was done by employees, uh we definitely found some consistency that we looked at there and said, hey. It looks like people have the same title, but they do different work, or you have different titles, and maybe it's pretty similar, we saw they. That was something else we missed, um and then again, with your pay scale, while it certainly was, again, a pretty simple structure, there was a little bit of a lack of consistency. Where you had some of the progression between grades uh that that vary, and so when you look at that, if you look at a grade, you know, one versus two or six versus seven. Two grades that are next to one another. Some of your grades were closer together, about six percent, some were further apart, about seventeen percent, that can cause a little bit of concern. If you got two grades that are seventeen percent apart. So if you're looking at an employee in one of the jobs in the lower grades, and you say, hey, I think they they really raised to the level where we should probably look at. Seventeen point gap is a pretty big one. Uh, so those organizations would have something a little closer together, so maybe you could give them that increase, it would be an eighty percent, you know, reclassification. Or or a five percent reclassification, rather than having all the way to that seventeen percent, so that was one of the other things that we wanted to look at. What you know, help is here. So with the review versus the market, uh we we did solicit responses from, you know, a number of local peers, listed up on the the screen there. Those are the organizations that did respond and provided us data for comparison. Uh, we did adjust for cost of living, the rankings as well, uh because we understand that we ended up being already located in the state or the region. The the cost of living can be different, we wanted to control for that, and so what that means is all of our recommendations are are based on your local market here. Um, and and all the recommendations are based on, you know, essentially what would that salary by an employee who lived here in this local area. Um, we did include, uh you know, a number of different jobs to compare to, we had more than five matches per position. So we did have a few positions we tried to compare to, didn't get a certain response of those, uh and I do want to, you know, reflect and make sure that we have a chance. If we returned one or two market matches for positions, you know, those were not used for the point of comparison, we looked at those positions we felt comfortable with. That that we felt like we had a good sample in the market, uh so that average of of five plus matches, we felt that about overall. On the next slide, I want to talk about those uh the the results, what were the numbers when we pulled back that data? And I do want to be very clear with these numbers that are on the screen, these are representative of averages. Uh, and so the average position, when we look at the pay range, from the minimum to maximum of the pay range. Was about sixteen or seventeen percent below the market. And so you didn't have some positions that came back even a little bit lower than that, you have positions that had a little bit better version of it as well. Uh, so obviously, you can't list every single position up here or have it one like this, but from the overall takeaway, when we look at the market. We look at your compensation system versus what your peers are doing. We did return market differential, and so what that means is there is a need for some adjustment, uh to for any change with the recommendations. To bring you in line with the market, uh and we also have some recommendations to make you stay in line with the market. Um, so as we get to the next slide, we'll talk about some of those recommendations. Um, recommendation number one is to adopt an adjusted pay scale, uh this is new pay rates added. So those new uh pay scales, again, are detailed in full in that written report that you all have access to. Um, the base bill that we're looking at has some more consistency, it is a relatively similar to what you have now, so again, you've got the ranges that that you can. Uh, your administrative pay, and you've got a consistent structure that you move up the the pay rate, you don't have a lot of variations between the grades anymore. Uh, and so if you have an employee or a position over cotton that is outgrown what they're doing. You would be able to better adjust and classify, you know, the positions in the future, um as as a position change over time, you know. Don't stay identical over the course of of employees to, if something changes, you'll have the ability to adjust. Number two, we did recommend an adjusted, uh you know, adjusted classification titles for a number of departments and net uh positions. So where we did identify from those job surveys, uh that they were inconsistent with the way that high rules were being applied. Uh, we did recommend a number of changes in that regard. Number three, once you have a new pay scale, um so you you can't just translate over, you know, grade one and then grade one, you know, we don't match up two grades like that. We actually looked at every single one of your positions. We looked at the information we had from the job description, from the job survey, and from the market to determine where was the best fit. For each classification that you have into the new system. So we cut that in the image, you do have some positions that are gonna see a a larger increase of the larger adjustment. Uh, to the the pay ranges of the classifications, that was based on, again, the information that we collected, both internally and externally. Some positions, uh those positions that were a little bit more competitive, they're not gonna see quite as much of an adjustment. Uh, and so here we've been talking about the positions, the titles, the classifications, uh but set forth, you then have to place employees into those pay ranges. So if an employee's salary right now is is approaching the max of the range, or maybe they're above the midpoint. Even if you adjust the salary in the position by ten or fifteen percent, you may not have to adjust the employee's salary, so how do you determine where the employee should fall? In the new sales. Uh, on this next slide, we'll we'll show you a number of different options that we have for you all to consider. Uh, I believe we have some definitions of these options on the next slide, as you see there again, the the options, you know, in cost did vary. Uh, we have quite a bit, depending on which option you select, uh as we go to those definitions, I kind of talk through each of the options that we propose. Uh, and then afterward on the next slide, we'll talk to you about the the option that we're recommending and why are we recommending that. So with the range and minimum approach, the range minimum is the cheapest approach you can go with, that's sort of the the approach that I just mentioned a moment ago. Where you where you look at, you know, if an employee's already making more than the the pay range minimum of their new grade, do you have to adjust that employee? If the employee was previously at the midpoint, if you increase the rate by ten percent, they're probably still within the pay range. But the problem with that approach, while this is a little bit, um, you know, easier to afford, this is a little bit, you know, cheaper. It does not address any current compression, and it also can cause new compression to form around the level of pay range. So again, if you adjust the pay ranges without adjusting employees, which you're going to find is. A lot of employees compressed at the bottom of the pay range. So again, while we did present this option, we were careful to say, you know, hey, this is is technically an option, it's not, I'm not gonna recommend it. Options number two, three, and four, they are relatively similar, so I'll talk about them together, and then I'll talk about the differences between them. So with the class, hybrid, and tenure parity models. Those are three different models for adjusting employees within the new pay ranges that we're proposing. To space them out appropriately, and so with the class parity model, what we do is, we look at the amount of time an employee has in their current job title. And we say, where should you be in your new pay range relative to the minimum and maximum based on your time in position? So as an example, if an employee has been in their current position for fifteen years, we would say that employee needs to be at least at the pay rate midpoint. Uh, we don't want somebody who's been in their grades that number of years to be at the minimum of the range. So if we found the employee near the middle of that, you know, we would raise them up to that midpoint of the grade. If an employee was already above the projected salary, we did not increase them any further. Uh, we essentially said, hey, you're you're making at or above your projection, we're gonna keep you where you are right now, uh with that class parity approach. With the tenure parity approach, uh it's similar, but instead of looking at time in position, we actually look at time with the organization overall. And so instead of the time in position, again, the time in the organization is a little bit more generous, it is more costly. Uh, that tenure parity approach, what that does, it's it doesn't matter how long you've been in your current job title. Uh, what matters is how long you've been with the city overall, and so while it is nice for employees, you know, employees love to say, hey, I've got full credit. I can move as far as I can possibly move in the system, the downside of that is if you've got employees who might have been with the organization for twenty plus years. But maybe they just promoted this year or a couple months ago or a couple weeks ago into their new position. We might cost an inverted by actually raising them up towards the max of their pay range, even though they just promoted into their position. So the tenure parity, again, in some cases works out relatively well, uh but in some cases it can cause some issues there. So with the class parity, again, you've got the advantage that you're only looking at their current time. Uh, but you can actually see the opposite problem occur, but if somebody's been in the city for twenty years and they promoted last week, they might look and they might say, wait a second. If I didn't promote, I managed to make more money, because I would have gotten all of that class time, I would have gotten all that credit. And because I promoted, the class parity option, I've lost something. So for that reason, the hybrid was developed, it's the hybrid parity model. It looks at granting employees full credit for their time in current classification. And half credit for all of their time with the organization overall, and so what that hybrid does is it does a better job of adjusting employees. Who have received um promotions throughout their career, it gives them partial credit for that previous experience they had. But again, if somebody spent twenty years of the organization and they just promoted, you know, yesterday. They don't need to be above the midpoint or close to the maximum because they're learning a new position. That being said, all that career experience should be re- uh should be recognized, so we don't need to put that person at the minimum either. So that twenty years of experience would become ten years of hybrid credit, uh again, they'd be placed about a third of the way through the pay range. The combo ratio approach is the last one that we have on the list here, and the combo ratio is nice because it does give a full market adjustment. Uh, it it essentially adjusts employees relative to the market movement their positions on. So if their position moved by ten percent, they get a ten percent increase. If their position moved by two percent, they get a two percent increase, uh and if it moved beyond that, I mean, they they get whatever percentage increase their position got. It's nice in in one way, but the downside of that is it does not account for current compression at all. It it essentially moves all of your compression from your current system into your new system. And so for that reason, as we go to the next slide, we'll say that we recommended the hybrid parity approach. Because we feel that best addresses the needs of the organization as we look at them from an internal and an external perspective. And so again, to recap that hybrid approach, what we're proposing with this increase. Is that you would have a minimum increase of four percent to account for market movement, inflation, catch employees up, to make sure nobody says. Hey, I'm not gonna get anything this year with this adjustment, I'm not gonna see zero. But that being said, we don't need to give an employee a twenty percent increase if they're already above their projected, um you know, hybrid uh parity salary. And so for that reason, it better allocates the dollars where they need to go. You have an employee who's at the minimum of the pay range, and they've been in the organization for twenty years, and then their current job title for five or ten years. We want to credit that employee. If an employee just started, um you know, with with the corporation approach, so they who started yesterday. Would receive the full difference of that market balance there, he said, that's a rookie time. With the hybrid parity approach, we'd be able to say, look, this person just started here, let's make sure they're appropriately placed. But we don't need to grant a twenty, twenty-five percent increase if we moved to pay range by that amount. Uh, to to an employee who hasn't necessarily been here and serving for that length of time. So the hybrid parity approach, we believe best addresses and best slots employees within the pay range. No salaries are reduced, again, there is that four percent little increase that we're proposing, uh so nobody's gonna come forward and say. Well, well, nothing happened to me, and my salary is lower than it was before. Next slide, we'll detail a few more uh recommendations that we have about system administration in general. And while we want to answer any questions that anybody has here. So for the system administration, we do have a couple recommendations, we want to make sure they're very clear. Uh, that you all are able to see what you would give you in the future to to ensure that you don't find yourself with a market gap again like you have before. Uh, number one is to conduct small C L salary surveys, um as needed, or sort of each year, you want to take a small portion of the organization. Take a look at those salaries in that area. If you're experiencing turnover in a certain department, you may survey a couple positions from that department. Uh, because we know that the market moves every year, and the market moves at different rates every year. It's not that every single position in the organization will move by the same amount, um so you want to be responsive and sensitive to those needs. If you start feeling recruitment and retention concerns, more so in your other works or trades position, you might survey a few of those. Um, in that year and say, hey, do we need to make an adjustment here? If it's public safety one year, if it's finance, you know, whatever department or whatever position you start seeing, you can survey those positions. You know, every single year to make sure that, hey, we're gonna take a look at these, to make sure we're not gonna fall below the market. The next thing that we would recommend is taking an across-the-board look, uh comprehensive class and comp study every three to five years. Now again, that can be something that you want to do internally if you have the resources to do that. Uh, but if you don't, it still is worthwhile to take a holistic look at your system. To ensure that you're essentially resetting the deck, taking a look at the internal and external equity. Uh, to make sure the position is moved appropriately, and so that you can tell employees that, look, we've done a classification review. We know your job description is accurate, we we gave you the opportunity to participate in the updating of your job description. Uh, because we do find, particularly in these last few years, but you know, even going back to the year two thousand before technology changed. Uh, you know, the the changing demographics of your area, we saw this in the previous presentation, the the number of new houses, you know, the the number of. Um, or the amount of infrastructure you're building now, that's gonna change the jobs that you have, and so you don't really five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten years. Before we have to do a job description or look at a position, so we really do recommend that you take that holistic look every three to five years. Lastly, is every single year, taking a look at the pay scale and the pay system itself. And so what that means is we do propose a few different options. And so what that means is we do propose a few different options. Or really, a few different recommendations for adjusting salary, they will vary the amount that you do each year. But we really recommend looking at a couple of different distinct levels, one of those is a cost of living increase. And so that increase would be something that you would give to the pay scale. And to all employees to account for changes in cost of living year over year. That increase in a typical year, now again, over the last two or three years. Most organizations might have given cost of living increases up four, five, six, seven percent depending on where you are in the country. But in a typical year, you might only see one and a half, two, two and a half, three percent, you know, somewhere in that one to three percent range, that might be a normal cost. Of living increase. Beyond that though, so as you increase pay scale, as you increase every employee's salary. You need to be able to offer some incentive for either high performers or employees who are going, you know, essentially developing a much cheaper asset. In the form of some sort of a merit or a wage increase beyond the cost of living. If you only give a cost of living and you give that every single year. Let's take an example of an employee who was hired at the minimum of the wage. If you give a cost of living and nothing else, next year, let's say it's three percent, they'll go to three percent and the pay scale was three percent, so they're still at the minimum. If you do that in year two, they move two percent, the pay scale was two, but they're still at the minimum wage. And what that means is a new hire who comes in will be making the same amount as an employee who's been here for two years. Again, in small doses, is it, you know, is that, you know, is it that big of a deal? Maybe not in one year. But over time, that builds up and it creates a significant issue. So we do recommend giving maybe a certain percentage increase, again, it could vary by year. Above and beyond the cost of living increase. To ensure that your employees move through wages, uh through the the pay scales. To make sure that you're addressing compression each and every year. So that when you do a comp study after three, four, or five years, you don't come back and say, look at all this compression we have. You're able to come back and say, look, we've moved employees, we kept up with the scales, and our employees are higher than they're supposed to be. So we again, detail these recommendations in much more, uh you know, with much more depth in the final report. Um that is something also that we've discussed with your HR director as well. And so that'll be something that he'll be able to discuss further, and we'll certainly be happy to address any questions, you know, on the future as well. As those policies, you know, look to be written, look to go into place, we're certainly happy to address anything, you know, as needed and written or, um you know, verbal or that. So that was the presentation that we had. Are there any questions? Is there anything um else that I can address for you all tonight?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um you were mentioning the the Hydra approach for. The two different sectors, so safety was one and then, you know, will be administrative. Would you, would you say that applies to both of those? Is you had that as a recommendation, that would be. Um the method you mentioned, is that? Or would you normally see one that might be one recommendation? Um and then another one might be the comfort plan or or whatever.
So it depends on anything that that's great, but we did break it down uh across two different groups. You can see the cost of it, and see what forty impacted differently. But the hybrid approach is the one we thought was most appropriate for both of your groups. There's not a one size fits all with any organization we go and look at, you know, we we always have to look at your data and say, you know, that could fit into all four groups. Sometimes an organization will come in and will say, you know, obviously you might need something different because salaries have been administered differently in the past. Uh if you've got one group who have received regular increases, they've moved throughout the ranges, they're not experiencing as much compression. Uh they don't have a measurable market gap, we might recommend a different approach. Uh we didn't see anything that rose to that level, that we needed to do a different adjustment methodology for the two groups. So again, we broke it out more for, you know, essentially displaying a bunch of purposes here and we do what happens to two groups. Um but we do believe the hybrid uh parity approach is the most appropriate to address um all the employees in this particular case. That's relatively common, you know, around the country, probably we work with, it is certainly. You know, it happens, uh but not always, it's not a hundred percent, we recommend the same approach.
I think, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
I I was good, I didn't have any questions, yeah.
Hi, well, thank you all very much, I really appreciate it. Uh please, you know, feel free to reach out if you have any questions, do come up, we're obviously happy to help and. Uh we will be here supporting you during implementation and, um, uh you know, the contracts we have, we're certainly happy to honor those and address any questions that come up. Uh into the, you know, coming here as well, so thank you so much for your time and your participation, hope you're gonna have a great rest of the night, thank you.
I'm good, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um. After the presentations we had tonight, as far as the follow-up to that, uh would like to add, it was. Nice to hear from all the department heads. A common theme that I heard was making the city of Malden better. And I think that's why this group of department heads worked so well together. Cause they're all working towards that same goal to make Malden even better. Change that culture and keep it forward, so thanks to each department head and for Mr. Fleman for making sewer, sewage, sanitation fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King, uh it's a public work, Mr. Craylon.
I I have nothing to add, thank you.
Might be, maybe, Mr. Fleman, happy clashing.
Nothing to say, Mr. Mayor.
Sir. Building codes of the, Miss Coosner.
Yes, Mayor, um. I have nothing, I did an excellent job presenting.
Thank you. Recreation for all of it. Number four here. Thank you, sir. Next item, unfinished business, we have none, our order to do with new business, per three, none. We're gonna do the next page, and we do have some standing of any items. For for us, uh, no.
This item is regarding a formation of a policy for free and reduce memberships for certain groups as um discussed by committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we best cover another recreation for all of it. Thank you, Mayor, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendations from the Recreation Department that outlined in your hat.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh one thing that I saw that maybe needed more clarification. Is under the fifty percent membership discount, it's intended. Uh the retired military and veterans and their families. But like, maybe there needs to be um a definition of families. Like because. You know, do do they retake that as. You know, everyone in their household or cousins and siblings, you know, families. Uh if we could define that. That would. That would be better.
Thank you, Mr. Coosner. Any particular recommendations for that, if it a member, or just if it moves forward, is something that's worth more of?
Mr. Mayor. I I do have a recommendation on that, simply because in being a former military dependent uh myself. I think a potential resolution there is, instead of having the word families, have the word dependents. Because that is a structured term uh for military members where you actually have issued identification for that. So it would give rec staff something to request from the individuals to prove their dependent status. Um that might be a a better alternative, sir.
So.
It sounded like I would make an amendment to the motion, we would change the word.
She didn't retire, she, her, my dad's been retired, yeah.
Yeah, motion to, as an amendment in the wording under. You know, we should just, you know, retired military veterans, members and veterans and their dependents, try to work families and independence. Is there a uh second?
Okay.
And so, Miss Coosner. But any discussion on the amendment? Therefore, did we also change dependence for the line item before that? Where it says, family member, full-time, part-time employee in the city of Malden, shall we change the dependence? Uh family members. Have you, uh.
Now, make sure you're doing this properly, I'd like to amend my amendment. To replace, to to do uh points brought up here, we mentioned fam- families in the uh motion. That in the, uh, we thought. It's a, we're changing it to dependent.
So Mr. Craylon is proposing his amendment would cover both family dependence. And well, as veterans and their dependents. These second one, you have a problem with that. His amendment. Your approval back. So we're back to the discussion, amendment.
Thank you, Mayor, uh my my concern would be, as as Mr. Duncan pointed out. Um the the definition has dependent going up to the age of eighteen, and once you hit the age of eighteen, you are no longer dependent. So um if you could still have a child whose permanent address is at the home, but could be at college. And you know, you're still, you know, that child is still on your insurance up until a certain age. Uh so would still be a dependent on many of uh your policies up to a certain age. And and I think that that would create the potentially an inconsistency, um you know, by cutting them off at at eighteen. I I I would probably feel comfortable if we had, you know, uh family members residing. Uh at the same address or or something along those lines where it's still. It it it's still kinda made allowances for the age, so I would, I would have to respectfully. Um vote against the wording that simply dependent.
Is there any wording of the, for Mr. King, she's an accounting expert as far as the dependence is the specification of the tax code?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's all I think, you know, we're gonna have to bring our active terms to pretty, your family members are, perhaps it's just, um. Immediate family members who reside in your residence, something to that effect. Um cause a dependent could be. I mean, you could have a disabled child that could be a dependent for their entire life, so it it. In respect of what Mr. Mattney referred to, so, um. We may be better off just leaving it at this than having staff use a little bit of common sense on that one. Um or go to the immediate family members. That would be our recommendation.
Any other discussion?
So i- if you put immediate, immediate family members residing in the same household. Uh full-time and part-time employees, otherwise you could open that up to, you know, and understanding. Kids who are going to college, they're probably still on your tax retirement until. Um enter someone who is twenty-six and you're doing.
Yes, a little bit, we think about this, we can call this the amendment for your vote, yet it was to not pass. It would be back to the original question, and you could propose a different amendment. Settle them in the amendment, the amendment, same thing, while they log in. Any other discussions? Here now. I will honor the amendment, which was to change the wordings under big discount from family membership, family dependence. And then under retired military service members and veterans and their families, their dependents. That needs to be amendment, we'll vote in on it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Amendment fail one to six. Alright, so now we're back to the original question.
Mayor, I would move, we we change uh those sections to say, uh. And and Mr. Duncan, you may need to help me massage this, immediate families, immediate family members. With a permanent residing under the same roof, or. Same permanent address. Immediate fam- immediate family members sharing the same address as a permanent residence, as a.
Then would be a full-time. And part-time employee. But the question, because of man. Is like you're treating part-time employees differently because their family members. Because in part-time, do not have the ability that if you consent membership. In other words, the two are separately treated.
No, we have full and part-time members.
And their, and all of their immediate family members residing with them. That would apply to both.
Yes.
But just clarify, this is a conjunction and raises that question. And we would definitely propose that this applies to. Immediate family members. Uh full and part-time employees residing in the rest.
That what you said?
Give or take, yes, sir, the same thing is there, and that's what's important, man.
I think what I'm hearing is a proposed amendment from Mr. Mattney that says, uh again, under fifty, fifty percent membership. Family, immediate family members of full-time and part-time employees. City of Molly residing at the same physical address, there was something else.
In there. Same address as the.
Same address as employee.
And furthermore, move that we authorize staff to make any technical changes. To enforce the intent of council.
I have the motion for Mr. Mattney on the amendment, so I understand the wording of the amendment, but I need to say it again. Thank you. There are a second to the proposal then.
Amen.
Next second, Miss Coosner. Any more discussion? Here, um, the motion to of the, to the amendment is following. Uh under fifty second member discount is immediate family members of full and part-time. Employees residing at address. As employed. Oh, they will add it up, employees and authorized staff to change wording and admit there to enforce capital intent. And that would fit under family members as well as retired military service and veterans and their, what I just said. Okay, the wording. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign.
No.
It would be, oh, alright, we're, we've heard that six one. So the amendment carries. Now we're back to the original motion. As amended. On the sports centers propose free and reduced membership fee policy. Any comment? Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, recognizing. Um, so in the few minutes that we spent talking about this. Um, kind of. Looks at what I have, no concern with our staff having to implement, the longer we talk about it, the more the list changes and the longer it gets. And we're asking them to implement. So when we're looking at this stuff, in my opinion, it's the limited, clear and concise. Um, and I think the only way to do that, Mr. Mayor is, is to take it and make it as clean as possible where we're eliminating. Family fifty percent across the board. I don't mind a part-time employee having a full three membership or still within the culture and the family of the. Uh, city in my opinion, so I have no issue with a full three membership for a sports center. Um, I have concern with active duty military service members who are not in the city. Having a free membership, just because that is a untraceable number in my opinion, and something that. When I just, that seems like it could be as many or as few as, um. That's just not a number I think is traceable. So again, it needs to be limited where said military member or retired military, military service member. Um, all need to be in city residents in my opinion. So, Mr. Mayor, I, I look at this and just say. Again, we talked about it for a while and, and the, the goal, I think of that sports center is to increase revenue. And working at single wage to decrease it here, in my opinion. Um. So all that said, I would propose that. We amended to have active duty military service members be in the city. At a free membership. That part-time employees also be free. For eliminating all family members. Um. From, from that discount. Had our retirement military service members and veterans, National Guard, et cetera, et cetera, all be within the city limits, but not families. And that's enough of a motion, Mayor.
We. Right, we hear. I have a proposed amendment from Mr. Reynolds that we strike. That we add the words active duty military service members live in the city of Malden. And that we also do it under retired military service members and veterans who reside in the city of Malden and. Just like, strike the words dependence and families and all that other stuff we just did. Uh, and strike the word fam- immediate family members from the full-time, part-time employees in the city of Malden. Uh, correctly said to your intent, Ms. Rose?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, is there a fact? Hearing on the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. We're back to the original question as amended. And the word immediate family and employees and, um, their families and their, uh, residing in the via. From the resident. Residency. Make a statement, okay? Okay, so comments, all those in favor of the motion as amended, say aye.
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 Those opposed, aye sign?
No.
Okay, the motion as amended carries six one. Next item of the vote.
This item is amendment, amended agreement for school resource officers with Greenville County to add two SRO grant positions to the current agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds, I've come out of, thank you, Mr. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm making a motion to approve the amended agreement for school resource officer of Greenville County. To add two SRO grant positions to Malden Elementary and Bethel Elementary Schools.
I have a motion from Mr. King. Is there a second?
Second.
Back from Mr. Reynolds. Any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor of motion to approve amended agreement on the school resource office brand count of that two SRO grant position for the current. Agreement. Alright, all those, you know, motion here to. Back to you, Mr. Reynolds.
Council is requested to approve the mutual aid agreement for Greenville County Fire Service.
Also.
Um, yeah, I'm making a motion to approve the mutual aid agreement for Greenville County Fire Service.
Yeah, a motion, is there a fact?
Second.
Back to Mr. Reynolds. Any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor of the motion to approve the mutual aid agreement for Greenville County Fire Service, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye sign? Hearing on the motion here, you know.
This item would authorize the mayor to execute contract amendment with Stuart Cooper Newell to increase the reimbursable allowance budget by thirty-five hundred dollars to not exceed a total of eleven thousand dollars.
Also coming for a vote, say it, Mr. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm making the motion to approve the Stuart Cooper Newell contract amendment one, not to exceed a total of eleven thousand dollars.
I have a motion. Mr. King, is there a fact?
There.
Second, Mr. Mattney. Any discussion? For others?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Duncan, could you help me understand this?
Sure. Yes, sir. Do you want me to go through it? I'm sorry, I was, I was waiting for a question. Sorry about that. Uh, no problem. Yes, sir. So, uh, in the packet, it says, the city agreed to a reimbursable allowance budget of seventy-five hundred dollars in the original agreement. With Stuart Cooper Newell. Uh, due to the higher than expected number of permit review submissions and associated printing costs, the architect requested to increase the reimbursable allowance. Uh, budget to cover the projected related expenses through the agreed construction timeline as outlined in the construction documents. Staff believes that the increase is reasonable based upon the expected travel demands to complete the construction timeline. All expected charges to this line item will be sent to Greenville County for payment as have all previous engineering expenses. Once all Greenville County bond proceeds have been expended, any additional charges will be assessed against the city of Malden's bond proceeds. And we're recommending a.
Is there allowable budget?
Uh, yes, sir. And that was due to, uh, in the agreement, it says due to a higher than expected number of permit review submissions and associated printing cost.
And the contract with Stuart Cooper Newell were probably not as good as I.
The total contract amount was about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Yeah, three hundred and sixty thousand broken into separate phases, uh, plus the seventy-five hundred dollar reimbursable allowance. Uh, which now they're asking to up that portion through the duration of the contract. Yes, sir. You're welcome to.
Mr. Reynolds, any other discussion? Hearing on all those in favor of the motion to authorize the executive contract amendment one with Stuart Cooper Newell to increase the reimbursable allowance budget by thirty-five hundred dollars. Do not exceed a total of eleven thousand dollars, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, aye sign? And none of the motion carried, no. Thank you. Mr. Reynolds?
This item is to authorize payment in the ma- amount of forty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirteen cents. From the general fund capital fund balance to the Cloverleaf Group LLC for water and sewer fees related to the construction of the new fire station.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Right back at you. Oh, second, Mr. King.
Yeah, busy now. So we got the technical detail of it, right? So, um. Just a little bit of history on this. Um, this is an item that was not included in the contract, Mr. Reynolds. Um, therefore, through, um, thorough research by staff, it's. Of our opinion that this needs to be paid back to Cloverleaf. Uh, by the city because it was not part of that original contracted price. Um, having said that, I will make the motion to approve the fire station tap fees to be paid to Cloverleaf Group. For the water and sewer fees in the amount of forty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirteen cents.
Thank you, Mr. King. This motion is a second, second, Mr. Reynolds. Any discussion?
Yeah, correct, ma'am.
Hearing on the motion for it is to, I know, a recommendation of approving payment in the amount of forty-six thousand, three hundred and. Forty-six dollars and thirteen cents to clover leaf from the general fund capital fund balance for water and sewer tap fees associated with the new fire station. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye sign? Hearing on the motion carries, you know.
Council is requested to reappoint Jack Reed as chief trial judge, Will McKibben and Christopher Jackson as associate trial judges. And Curtis Spearman and Mark Putnam as administrative judges through the expiration of the newly created two-year appointment terms.
Well, that'd be scary.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. I'm making to approve the reappointment municipal, uh, the municipal judge, judges to need two-year appointment terms.
Mr. King, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Reynolds. Any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor of the motion to approve the municipal judges. Administrative judges. Or two-year appointments, say aye.
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 Those opposed, aye sign? Hearing on the motion carries. If that rules.
Council is requested to appoint the Honorable Erica Stinson as a part-time administrative judge for the city of Malden.
Yes, public safety, Mr. King.
Um, well said. Miss Miller, uh, mentioned to appoint. The Honorable Erica Stinson as the part-time administrative judge for the city of Malden.
Thank you, Mr. King. Is there a second?
Second.
Back to me, Mr. Reynolds. Any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor of the motion to appoint the Honorable Erica Stinson as a part-time administrative judge through the X right and U three to your board. I added that, it's written, okay, I did. Say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye sign? Hearing on the motion carries, you know.
Hi, Randy.
Council is requested to authorize the execution of a contract between city of Malden and Panagakis asphalt paving, the repaving of the public works facility parking lot.
Well, this is public works, Mr. Reynolds.
I'd like to very much, uh, for the city to execute the attached contract, uh, with the city of Malden. And to the map, the gap, uh, asphalt paving, okay? Um, for the, uh, public works facility parking lot.
Yeah, the motion, Mr. Reynolds, is a second.
Second.
Back to Mr. King. Any discussion?
I'm just gonna, the price of this contract? Pardon me? The price of the contract is, the price of, the price of your contract is two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars. Uh, that was a little bid. We had a budget of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the budget. So there is a difference. Mr. Mayor, I think you were going right around getting this.
Okay.
And then listening to your conversation. Yeah, uh, the fourth or whatever you were making, Mr. Reynolds. Um, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend the motion to award the contract lowest bid of two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars to Panagakis. Um, but recommend that we use twenty-five thousand dollars before we have the sewer fund to cover the difference between the budget amount and the contract amount.
Mayor, is the original motion need to be rescinded in order for Mr. Reynolds to make that motion?
Uh, I understand his amendment was just to add the wording of, uh. Moving the twenty-five thousand dollars from the steward, capital sewer, enterprise sewer fund. To stay for it. That was the wording of the amendment. Wait, uh, I heard from legal counsel and the district.
Mr. Mayor, that's, that's fine. Thank you. Yes. Just to amend it to say that twenty-five thousand will be pulled over from sewer fund to cover the difference of the. Budget amount.
Yeah. So the amendment before us is, uh, as proposed by Mr. Reynolds is to add the wording by using the steward fund amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to. Make the contract. To, to cover the difference.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. King. Any discussion on the amendment, Mr. Koo?
I just have a question. That guess the difference is nineteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three. So what is the extra five thousand?
The contract can often be covered on opening a sewer fund. Is nineteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three.
And then recommending twenty-five thousand people in sewer fund to cover the difference.
I think that can be revised down, uh, Councilman Kuzner to nineteen eight twenty-three to cover the full expense of the, the contract. So.
Or should we consider a not to exceed term now to, to amend the. You could, well.
Yeah.
We can just do that at twenty.
Sure. Yes, sir. We can do that.
Is that a proposal of a member and trying to help Mr. Reynolds and reword it? I, I can take it as an amendment, good invention.
An amendment to the amendment.
That's all good if you propose an amendment to the amendment that we add the term not to exceed twenty thousand dollars in the capital. I'm talking in the sewer fund transfer. Correct. Is there a second to?
Second.
I have back to Mr. Koo. We have a question for us right now to add the words not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. From the sewer. From the sewer fund to cover. Cover the difference. You notice I'm living my business.
We'll be glad our students have our opinions right here. I see, Mayor.
Alright, so we have the, uh, amendment to the amendment to add the wording not to exceed twenty thousand dollars from the sewer fund to cover the difference. Okay? Any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor of amendment, the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We are now back to the proposed amendment by using sewer fund. Not to exceed twenty thousand dollars to cover the difference. Any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor of the amendment as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, aye sign? Hearing on, we're back now to the primary motion as amended. To execute the contract with Panagakis. For two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars by using the sewer fund not to exceed twenty thousand dollars to cover the difference. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye sign? Hearing on the motion carries, you know. Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
Council was requested to adopt the resolution to authorize to proceed on the sale of old damaged equipment in the public works department.
Yeah, I believe that comes from public works, it's the trend. Uh, okay, motion that council authorized the, um. Listing of old damaged equipment of government deals presented on, uh, to this, um, to that item.
Uh, motion, Mr. Craig, is there a second?
Second.
Back from Mr. Reynolds. Any discussion? Here in all of the special motion for council to approve the sale of old damaged equipment as by listing on government deals. Uh, do we need to put it there? Alright, so then here this is what the government deal. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed like sign. Here you know the motion carries now.
Council was requested to approve an amendment to pass order zero-one with KCI to provide stormwater project design services.
I'd like to uh make a motion to approve the amendment to pass order zero-one with KCI. Um, this is for.
Yeah, I think I heard the motion to approve an amendment to dashboard other one with KCI. About stormwater project designs or just no better at that point. Is there a second? Yeah, I have a second. Um, Mr. Allgood. Any discussion? For Allgood.
Thank you, Mayor. Just just a point of clarification on our signage.
No discussion. Here in all of the favor of the motion to approve an amendment to pass order zero-one with KCI about four hundred project design service, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed like sign. You have none of the motion carries, you know.
Council was requesting to approve an amendment to pass order zero-two with KCI to provide stormwater asset inventory on called GIS services. Stormwater modeling, grant assistance, and a citywide stormwater master plan.
I'd like to make a motion to amend that order two with KSI. Or change to KCI.
Okay, motion for Craig is our second.
Second.
Back from Mr. Allgood, any discussion? Here in all of the favor of the motion to approve the amendment to pass order oh-two with KCI to have stormwater asset inventory on called GIS services. Stormwater modeling, grant system, and exceeding by stormwater master plan. Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed like. Here you know the motion carries now. That completes our. End of items. We have next committee of the whole, there's none. Uh, the next area that we get to is the public comments for items probably good of the city. Of all that is not even on the agenda. The addressing the council regularly, in person which in the rest council would still like to pick a lot. I had to give. Uh, so this will be allowed to speak on any matter other than personnel matters or matters under litigation. Prior to council consideration, they are agenda with that. You already went through the agenda. Uh, presentation will be limited, please to three minutes, five minutes uh. For your items, no sharing, it's easy times. Uh, it's popular recall, if you observe that anyone can batch. Uh, it is a. Chance for city residents or business owners to voice their comments to council. It is not a debate. It is not a back and forth between that is strictly to get your opinions. Uh, and your comments directly to city council. Council members will be allowed to have. Clarifications that they need to from the speaker. With that being said, the. First gentleman on the agenda is I know as the Honorable Dr. McFay.
Kingsley Drive and Mirwood. Has a serious storm water problem. About the second week of November, there was about a five-foot. Tree trunk. Stuck in the. Creek going into the. Stormwater box. And if you guys want to start in people live on her property. I stopped because two weeks before it completely flooded their yard and we're across the street. I asked the guy, KCI was there. I said, you just do a generic. Marking the GPS, he said, yeah. So did you notice the log? He said, yeah, but all we're doing is marking. So um, got with them, what homeowners? They put a call into. Public Works where they called. Uh, I've known this homeowner for fifteen years. Kind of had a joke with him that they're gonna tell you it's really kind of broken. You're gonna take a period, they're gonna tell you it's a problem. I don't remember who came out. He called me now and then two days. A crew was out to remove the tops off of the boxes. He saw us watch them put the tops back on the boxes. Uh, left the tree trunks still in there. Which was in there until Saturday, past Saturday. He was advised to call a core of engineers. To get this addressed. So I included some. Pictures, it's maybe just so you guys could see it. They played a truck right and then you guys never had understanding. It just supports this comment feedback to the council. I don't know. I've got a good, I've been trying to picture that in print, the usual TV. I apologize, these were the chronic one that go over and so back. There's a picture of the law gets in there. What is it? I should say, uh, next picture, please. That was two weeks after those folks on the left right there who didn't own the house. We wanted to warn them. Before they had honestly. And I wouldn't. I wouldn't warn anybody. I'd warn you guys if you're willing to try. Uh, can you go and do the third one? What grade is the children? So this is Kingsley where Mirwood comes comes down. That's going up Kingsley towards my house. If I if I turn around, you're gonna increase. I'm not pointing at Mirwood.
This one, sir.
That is, it had order, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
We got a friend of mine his drum and he flew back there. That doesn't look like it. That's Miss Anderson's property. That single, did she see the big cut-in? You could fit this room in. Now that's come from the Soviet period building. It's a completely different topic. I mean, I'd beat that horse to death. But all the trees are falling in there. And that's her property that's being destroyed. So. Uh, that's just, that was another one back there. If you go to the next one, please. Uh, go, go, I'm sorry, that got out of order. I apologize. There is about those concrete pipes are three feet diameter. They're supposed to be about fifteen feet higher in the air. Um, it comes behind, pop as a mirror. Into a cistern for lack of better term. Then steps down to another one, then steps down to those, those that fall in the tube that are up in the air. You put down another picture, you'll. There's a line on it. You can see all erosion.
Sorry.
Okay, there's there's a picture. That black hole in the ground is where it first comes out. Then it should can break across there to the next one that's completely fallen over. That's your garden. Hey, I'm sorry, you said out of order. Okay, what is this? Is the keep on this page? Or back and back again? The creek on the left is coming from the other side of the road. The mud creek is coming from those folks' property and from where all that sewer pipe or that stormwater pipes. All that is filling in the. Lady who owns the house in the neighborhood of the lake.
Looks like that's it. You mean backup or?
Yeah, that that's. That was all pictures.
Okay.
All I'd like to know is, is, yes, this is a Ringo County problem. Here's who we should talk, we should. Actually, Tony is supposed to talk to Ringo County. Or is this a shared Ringo County? Own the city problem that is on the radar. We're not against development, anyways, but we're against development. These things are happening in address or we don't know that these things haven't are being addressed behind the scenes. So if somebody could stop by, you guys know where the. Say it, it's on the radar. Couple of years, we'll get it. Okay, they've listened to us. But when man is. Being asked to call the board of engineers. That saves a little bit, thank you.
You would state your name and your state of business address. And your home address.
We will ask for your tax return, Dr. Phil.
Yes, if you hand these out, I'd like to say everybody.
Alright.
And the mayor already hit.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council people. Women and men. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you. Basically, I'm talking on. Talk about the city center approach. Uh, we had a, y'all had a good. Business announcement with the Ringo news about all the dying countries happening. Uh, and that one little piece caught my attention in there that I need to talk to y'all about is the real name. Uh, Nathan Street, the genius court. So that basically is my handkerchief. And it's exploding on me. I've been here forty-five years. The corner is a great place to work, to live, we live here. We've worked here for forty-five years. And I've got twelve staff who work for me on the Deacon's. And half of them are right here. To show you how good they are. Y'all talking about important. The first three over here, I had them doing the year. Chuck's been with me forty-two, forty-four years. Doctor Simmons been with me twenty-eight. I've got a groom who's been with me twenty-five. And I got a wife over there saying, let me call it back. So it's real life, all. Where we are, we want to stay in Malden working. And I have found out. From the city centers that we have not, we don't necessarily as landowners know what's going on. I have tried to approach. The city. Three or four times, me approaching. Nobody has ever come to my office. J R came the other day. That's the first time since the city approached. I have, we even sent a letter to the city administrator. But from a lawyer and I'm, what I'm talking about today is not from a lawyer's standpoint, it's from a virtual Michael Phelps experience. No response to this date after two years that's been made to that letter. Except one or two references that we can't even talk to because he sent a letter. I was trying to get involved in the planning of not of parking. But parking is critical to my uh, business. Now, what we want to start off with here. Is. You take the first page. This is a drawing that we have that shows fourteen spaces. If you take the second drawing, the big one. This is where. City sending an appraiser down there. And when I say city, forgive me. Because it is, I understand this taking a hard time to to know that moving parts. Y'all are in agreement with the Ringo County. And Co-Transcorp is the one who's hanging by my office here. That was the first real contact that I had. He brought me a roll of paper. Of all your plans for the city roads. Next thing I knew. I had an appraiser come, call, uh, send me a letter. He wanted to come do an unsolicited appraisal of my property. Which he did. I waited and come in and followed me. And I wanted to read you, and I'm sure that none of y'all have read my appraisal. That it, that y'all's. That y'all know what it did. That. They know the dollar figure on the property that y'all were taking. But I'm not gonna ask with your hands. That wouldn't be wise. But I do want to read it and there's gonna be two pages, seventy and seventy-one. And I'm gonna highlight what's written in blue. Basically, we start with the descriptions. And and basically all of this that I'm saying is background information. I want council to know what's going on, what hasn't been going on, what hadn't been going on. I want to stay in business like what we're doing right now. We've been there forty-five years. I'm I'm not ready to retire yet. Should there? Description of the acquisition. The new right-of-way requires five hundred and thirty-seven square feet. Or point zero one-two acres from the subject. It is located on the northern end of the subject. At the corner of Jenkins and Jenkins Court. The road right-of-way on Jenkins Street becomes a new twenty-five wide right-of-way and there is a new side angle twenty-five by twenty-five. That comes in front of my front door. It comes within ten feet of the corner nearest. But parking is not entrance door. And many of y'all have been to my office. You can imagine where it is. You park there. This will be taken by the county. And and we're gonna skip down. The road project includes drainage, curb, and gutter. Afterwards, access will only be from a specified forty-foot wide driveway on Jenkins Court. This access to two streets is reduced to one street. Access and parking are removed on Jenkins Street. Which eliminates three parking spaces there. And I'll note there's a heavily traveled visible spot. Three parking spaces on the channel side of the building. Allowed to be there from RV channel are eliminated. The side angle eliminates one more parking spot. And the new driveway and the new right-of-way on Jenkins Court cuts off the rest of the parking. Then talks about code requiring parking thing. We'll skip that. Y'all can read that. Based on the space constraints, the subject should have two or three parallel parking spaces after the project potential. I have thirty-six or forty clients coming today to parking. Some of them park twice. And that's in the information that I sent. And then with the highlight here is the highest and best use avenue. After the project, the subject land is smaller than reported. Access is changed and parking is lost. It had thirteen spaces and it has a best case scenario of two to three parking spaces down. The loss of the parking caused a total loss in functionality utility to the business operation. The business cannot survive and since it is a highly specialized building. It cannot be remodeled for another use. The buildings and improvements have no utility and no value after the process. The highest and best use in the assembly means taking it apart after the project. Therefore, the value added is a land. Is landless demolition palace. I was shocked. And I doubt that any of y'all know the extent of what. These plans are all for, or they're. And I doubt that any of y'all know the extent of what these plans are called for or their consequences. I'm here tonight. To. Let you all know, but I'm not sure the left hand knows what the right hand knows. Going on with our, with our business. We've been there. My building has been there. For six years, built by RV channel. And you can see some of the diagram on the first map that you looked at. RV owned the property that you're selling, the Parker Group. It owned the street that you, is now a street, but it was private land to start with. He developed, he built that building for his daughter. He later sold it to Dr. Chandler. They straightened out the front of the line and allowed a little more parking, but still. When you park in front of my building, if you got a long truck, it goes over on the rest of the channel of parking. He created that parking in the sixties. Malden City called it, I think. In two thousand and seven. Okay. But we have been there parking for sixty-five years with his name, so that's the situation, okay? Now. The. And I'm summarizing part of this. Main thing is, you're, on, on this other map, you're taking away parking spot. I need off-site parking. We've got fourteen now, and we use four down the road at Thumbs Up, Wanderer, and on Jenkins Court. But I still need a total of eighteen parking spots for my clients. If you put a curb like this in front of my building, people cannot cool in our area. Now. Backing up just a little bit. First, we really learned about also the, the, the taking on Jenkins Street. Was when Jeff Hildebrand came to Co-Transport. Who made me a seven three. Took me a while to understand the plans. But it caused for a ten-foot sidewalk. Around the building with curbing of four, forty feet in between. I think I can work with Jeff. Not sure, I, I, I need y'all as council to know where we're coming from. Because we've been able to negotiate. Down to a drive over sidewalk rather than a curb. And go to five feet rather than. Ten, uh, ten feet sidewalk, all the way up and down. The other point that I need to put in there. We've not had any visitation from the city on my property discussed. In any official way, and I have tried. However, J R did come down the other day. He wanted, and his, his vision was not to. Discuss. Situation. I was told to discuss it only. With Jeff Hildebrand. And I think we can do that. But he, but his instructions were, and this is written, his instructions, and this kind of gets me a little bit. I've been working with the city for a long time. He said, and, and Jeff wants a reply within sixty days, and that was back in January. So that's why I'm here after seeing that article about real line, and that's why I'm here talking to y'all today, but you don't know what's going on. J R said. First thing we're gonna do is negotiations. If we don't resolve it, then we go to mediation. And if we don't resolve it, then we go to court. Leading to condemnation. And there's another word that's often used that I'm not gonna mention tonight. I'll let y'all come up with that if it goes that far, but I don't think it needs to go that far. I'm here to resolve this. Okay? And I want you to consider seriously option number one, which I have outlined. There's two other options beside that. But option number one. It says, therefore, I am presenting our desire to protect our business and stay involved. I am not ready to sell, retire, or be forced out of business. I believe we can work out an amicable solution at McFay Animal Hospital. And the Malden City Center by one. Maintain all current and staff parking on Jenkins Court. That's Jenkins Court. By utilizing a five-foot row over sidewalk along our eastern property line. Minimum of a hundred and seven feet from the south end of that. Provide, and this is a sticking point, because the other part, Jay, uh, Jeff and I. Co-transport, I think we can work out when we're free. This is a sticking point for y'all, being council people. Provide seven deeded staff parking spaces. Approximately twenty by seventy on Jenkins Court. This is basically either the Jenkins Court or Four Seasons property. Entering the wrong scene in court, it could be ten feet from the street, it could be ten feet from the court, but they need to be. Deeded to me. If you're taking away my deeded property, I need deeded parking. For my future. Parking may be used, parking may be used on this land in non-business hours by the public. And I understand minimum public parking was provided in the townhouse area across the street. There's forty new townhouses going out. Now. Since the city project is taken five hundred and thirty-seven square feet on a heavily traveled road, and Jenkins Court eliminated five and seven parking spots. Plus our six, eight with hospital sign, it is only reasonable that permanent replacement parking be provided. To lessen the efficiency and economic impact to McFay Animal Hospital. Sign needs to be relocated, property proposed to be taken will be ten feet from the. Northeast corner of the building and directly in front of the building entrance. Construct an ingress and egress. In the event this taking occurs, I will prefer a written guarantee from the city. There will be no entrance and use of this entrance. Future sale of property or ordinance is reducing our occupancy and efficiency. In the event, while the duty is not to provide the. Deeded parking, I will consider purchasing the Four Seasons property. At a value to be determined by Joel Noer, the price of our property in order to keep McFay Animal Hospital operating. For the clients and people of the city of Boston. There's a couple of other options in there that you can read, but I don't think I would go for it. That's my game plan. That's what I would like y'all to be aware of. And I think that's. The third way to resolve this situation. I will be open to any, glad to have anybody come down to our office. And look at it in detail. I'll also be glad to answer any questions you may have. At this point in time, because this is an opportunity to help to the decision makers, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. McFay. If you're all good. Uh, Mr. Duncan, uh, can you tell us about how many parking spaces that are going to go in with the townhouse, how it's built?
When you refer to how many are going in, do you mean along the street or?
Uh, it, it says, I understand mental public parking is provided in the townhouse area, so I'm curious how many. But all said, a reasonable amount of parking that would be. Potentially could be used by Mr. McFay over the course of the project.
Yes, sir. I don't have those figures in front of me tonight, but I can prepare this for council, because they are on the plan that the townhome, um, project. Uh, has on their site plan, and then same with the additional recreational, um, commercial space as well. I just don't have those figures in front of me tonight.
I think if you get to figure out that, if, if it would, it's. It's all good. There will be some parallel parking on Jenkins Court. I was at a meeting when they developed, talked about doing the townhouses. In my recollection, that there will be minimal. Uh, parking, public parking in the townhouse area. What we also surprised me that is a two-car garage. It's one behind the other. Okay?
Very good. Well, I, I, I do truly appreciate you coming out and, and sharing your thoughts and. I, I definitely want to. To talk, yeah, I, I want to have a better understanding, because ultimately. This project should benefit you in the long run with its own right, right? Right, so we, we've tried to have input. Okay, and this is where we are.
And, and, and this will go. Back to Jim, as you see, it's suggested, it's addressed to him. With Go-Transport, who will basically, as I understand, come to Mr. Duncan. Who will basically come to y'all, as I understand, it's in your hands. That decided, and I think the sticker is go be in the deeded parking, and I know y'all are gonna be getting that up. But it's very important. My longevity, my clients, be able to access and get in. Any other questions, clarification?
Just one, sorry, clarification. Um, just for clarification, you said you discussed with Jeff about the, um. Sidewalk going from ten feet.
I, he suggested. Okay, he suggested, and he also suggested that he could put in a road. Level sidewalk without a curb up and down, so that part. Is basically what we were asking for a long time ago. Which is no problem. Although it's his suggestions. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. McFay. Appreciate the opportunity. I also want to tell y'all, you, you need a raise. I appreciate y'all being here, listening, caring, man. I, I work with few organizations, but thank you for being on the council and giving the time.
Thank you. Maybe we were in the middle of the conference, buddy. Next on the agenda is council concerns, council having concerns. Here's, um, uh, I'm forced to adjourn, but I'm glad you're council. So move. Move into adjournment or take that, that from everybody, all of the papers say aye.
Aye.
Those twenty-five times we are, they turned it up.
Do you want me to hold on to this, or do you need it back? Okay, because I can get, I can send it out to them that way.
Hang on, I, I got something.
Thank you.